Well, remember Edwards for the record is our second. Seconded by by Cheer Dunton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please be let my know by the sign of I. Motion carried. First item on the agenda is the updates, Dr. Stephen Ellis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go over the, we've got some items. Got some paper on your. Then folders on your tables. You should have a. Powerpoint presentation first. Then you're gonna have a. Another document that's called the plan of transfer. And there will be a separate document. And I'm telling you this, Bill, we have it in assembly under two seconds, so I'll make sure you have a copy. And then you're gonna have an inventory list. Which goes with the transfer plan. So you should have three. Documents that we're gonna discuss tonight. So good evening again. It is great to be here tonight because we get to highlight Nash County Public Schools. I just want to first thank you for your support and when we have these highlights, it kind of. Puts in perspective, you know, where the funds, what's going on, what the updates are, and we had a real good year, so we want to make sure we share it. So on the agenda of the night. It's gonna look like this, we had a welcome. Once again, thank you. We're gonna talk about new construction, which involves Red Oak Elementary, we also have some ongoing projects we're gonna discuss. Talk about student safety. Academic services and accountability. Then we're gonna have an area of focus and then we're gonna go into the plan of transfer. So Angie Miller is in Philadelphia, so I'm gonna do the, make this part the construction. And what I do on the highlight is. You can see up here in your packet, we have Spring Hope Elementary. It's got the second phase renovation, large in-house projects for two month completion. That, uh, you get a chance inside that building, it looks brand new. The Edwards 600 Hall was the final phase of renovations. Carpet install in 14 classroom is at Spring Hope, three at Bimbinu. You have Nashville Elementary, Winston Avenue, and Willoughby's office. Renovation of NADA, which is our Nash Everywhere Digital Academy, which is on the campus of Willoughby. Now has new paint, floor tile, added access controlled entrance, like our school do with the badge. Completed items for the EVOL's weapon detection system, Mr. Ward will come up here shortly and talk about the new EVOL system we have in our middle and elementary schools. The movement of teacher supplies from Cedar Grove and Swift Creek Elementary to the Red Oak Elementary was done successfully. Southern Nash High School softball and tennis field house is complete. Designed and built counter installed door at Bimbinu Elementary School, they have a new lobby that we'll discuss, I think I have a picture of that. Pave Winston Tar River Academy and Nash Central Middle. Install new cooler freezers at Edwards Middle. Nash Central High, final phase of the roof. And the freezer floor tile at Southern Nash High School. Got some pictures we want to show. This is the new construction of Red Oak Elementary. Tell that, uh, that is a beautiful campus, I believe someone who came to see that was, that was a beautiful, that was a beautiful building. Bimbinu Elementary, that is the new register booth. That was put in for safety reasons. This is the, um, project we are, I know there's a sign out there now. I think some trees are gonna be shut down, the new Northern Nash Field House. We worked around on that, I believe it was two weeks ago. What that construction, it was a high completion, please. Closing of stools to maximize space, Swift Creek and Cedar Grove and green or vacant buildings right now. We have sold Braswell and the Rockhamout High School Baseball Stadium. Right now, I'm gonna get Mr. Ward to come up here and talk about school safety.
Good evening. Um, as Dr. Ellis stated, I will be talking about school safety. As a part of some ongoing, um, school safety measures that we've taken on this year or the last two years. We have installed, or have hired six middle school SROs, one per school. We have eight elementary SROs, one SRO serves two schools in those elementary schools. We have four high schools, uh, each that has an SRO. However, we'll say that Rockhamout High School now has two SROs for Rockhamout High School, all other high schools do have one. There are two SROs assigned to Tar River City and Rockhamout Middle. That is because they're on the same campus, so those two SROs are right there, um, serving those, um, three, um, schools. Uh, the EVOL weapons systems in which we installed this year in all of our middle and high schools. This is a picture of one of them at one of our middle schools, I think that is Massacre Middle. This is what we call a single lane. The weapons detection system. And this is pretty much for those schools that are small, like our middle schools. However, our high schools have what we call dual lanes, because they have over a thousand students to get more students in faster. I believe we can get over 500 students in, pass through in less than about 15 minutes. What funded these measures, the SROs and also the, um, weapons detection system. Through a funding stream of, uh, grants that were provided from the state, uh, Center for Safer Schools. And also state funds and, um, monies that were donated, not donated, I'm sorry, monies that were allocated from what we call O-69, which are at-risk funds. Uh, this is a picture of the dual lane that's in all of the high schools. And again, the purpose of the dual lanes is to get more students, uh, through the process much faster, much easier without any interruption. Uh, some of the measures that have been taking place over the last two years. The Center for Safer Schools, the grant does fund us for two years to cover the SROs and also, uh, the weapons systems, which are currently being paid for through the grant funds as well. So we've installed additional cameras in the schools. Access control doors in which, um, Dr. Ellis just alluded to earlier, in terms of you must use a badge to get in certain parts of our buildings. SROs, of course, in all of our schools now. Schools are required to conduct safety drills, of course fire drills, they must by law conduct those monthly lockdown drills for per year. And tabletop activities or exercises with their staff, uh, just going through different types of scenarios, they are required to do this, um, at the beginning of the year. Say something reporting. That is a anonymous reporting system that our students use and they're using it right now to report, uh, things that they may, uh, think that may be, um, significant to us in terms of a student being in danger or. Or anything that they think that may be harmful to a school, so students are reporting that anonymously and I will say the principals are following up on that in a very timely manner. Uh, school safety plans, which are currently being finalized at this time, all schools are required to. Draft and submit a school safety plan through our safety, um, CERA, which is a platform for our safety plans and our, uh, one of our. What is his name, Mr. Lewis with Emergency Management, he is currently reviewing those and giving our principals feedback on those plans, so they can submit and finalize those plans. Um, we also have a district safety team in place, that district safety team is comprised of teachers, administrators, um, local EMS. And our central office members to make sure that we are hearing other people and that we are, make sure that we are getting feedback from the community as well and all of our stakeholders when it comes to school safety or district safety. Um, emergency red panic buttons that goes along with the lockdown drills, when they are having one of their lockdown drills, they must do one with law enforcement. And use that red emergency button to make sure that button is working and active at all times, or at least at that particular time. On the rave app system, that's something that we're gonna launch this year, this is new, it is just another layer of support for safety. It is a mobile app that all staff members in the district will have access on their cell phones. Well, with a touch of a button, they can call 911 in case of an emergency. Or in the case of a non-emergency, they can just locate or, um, notify those that are on staff. Say for instance, if Johnny's on the playground and Johnny falls down and, um, has a bloody nose, well, the teacher or the, that's out there on the playground could just hit the app on her phone. And then it will contact whoever the administrator has designated to come out there, like for instance, a school nurse or administrators or someone else, or first responders to go to the playground to assist. That is my report for school safety, at this time Melissa Dancy Smith will come forward with high academic expectations.
Good evening. Over the past three normal years, the district has moved its trajectory to improve student academic outcomes. We continue to work diligently to accelerate learning experiences for all of our students every day in every classroom. If you bring your attention. To the blue box. In 2018-19, we had four schools to exceed growth. 10 schools to meet growth. And 10 schools did not meet growth. In 1920, COVID hit, so we did not administer any end of year assessments. In 2021, we administered end of grade and end of course assessments. However, our. Status carried from the previous years and we did not receive any growth data. So moving to 21-22. We had eight schools that exceeded growth, six schools that met growth, and 10 schools did not meet growth. Last year during the 22-23 school year, we had 10 schools that exceeded growth. 10 schools to meet growth and 10 schools did not meet growth. We had, I'm sorry. Five schools did not meet growth. We had nine schools to improve its letter grades. And TRA moved from declining to maintained. So how did we rank among other school districts across the state? In 21-22, we ranked 97 out of 115 school districts. In 22-23, we ranked 78 out of 115 school districts, moving up 19 places in our rankings. If this trajectory continues, we hope that next year this time, we will rank 59 out of 115. And we feel that with the evidence-based, um, practices that we've put in place, the monitoring at the district level. If we continue with this momentum, we will be 59 out of 115 school districts. For the first time since 2014-15, Nash County Public Schools exited below performance status. We are relentless in improving classroom experiences for our students. And although we wanna make sure that all students have academic experiences. We also recognize the importance of developing those soft skills, or as our state superintendent refers to them, as those durable skills. So it's important to us that as we engage with parents, teachers, students, and other stakeholders across Nash County and Edgecombe County. That we are supporting the portrait of North Carolina's graduate. It's important to Nash County Public Schools that when students graduate from our high schools, that they are adaptable. That they're good collaborators, that they can communicate well, that they have critical thinking skills. Show empathy for others, have a learner's mindset, and that they assume personal responsibility. We recognize that with these skills, children can trans, um, can transcend into the workplace, armed forces, or to higher education. So how are we supporting these durable skills? CTE and work-based learning. Dr. Ellis gave us a charge to increase the number of work-based learning experiences that our high school students engage in. This year, we were projected. To, um, assign 75 to 100 students. Work-based development experiences. But for the fall of '23, we have already assigned 117 students. This summer, we collaborated with Nash Community College and we formed the first WIN Academy. We had 16 students to successfully complete the program and five exited the program employed. Now I wanna talk a little bit about our Spanish emergent program. We have, um, Spanish emergent programs at Inglewood, Middlesex, and Winston Avenue. This year, we introduced Spanish classes at Edwards Middle School as well, as well as Southern Nash Middle School. We have roughly 254 students enrolled this fall. I do wanna point out that when some of our students leave middle schools, they will have earned two high school credits in Spanish. College and career promise. Right now, we have roughly 891 courses that are being taken at Nash Community College. North Carolina STEM Schools of Distinction. We are, um, in the process of applying and researching to have to, um. Add a grant to our district that will allow Nashville Elementary, Red Oak Elementary, and Red Oak Middle School to be North Carolina Schools of Distinction. Advanced teaching roles through opportunity culture. Bailey, Coopers, Inglewood, Fairview, Middlesex, Red Oak Elementary, Willoughby, Winston Avenue, Edwards and Parker are all part of opportunity culture. Opportunity culture is unique in that we pay teachers a stipend and it puts excellent teachers in front of most of our students. The Village is a mentoring program for high school males. And as it stands right now, we are mentoring roughly 50 males across the district. And, and these students are being mentored by prominent males throughout our county, just helping our students to see positive. Individuals who could, um, serve as role models for them. Next, I will ask Tremaine McQueen to come forward.
So at this time, we're gonna talk about the areas of focus that our group is. Concentrated on for this year. One is gonna be the increase in salary benefits. The technology demand. Will go into the demerger impact and teacher retention, and I believe the first slide is gonna be Mr. McQueen, the technology.
All right, so let's get started. Good evening, how are you guys doing? Good, all right. All right, so, uh, I'm here tonight to share some brief information, uh, concerning our device refresh plan. And, uh, about three years ago, y'all heard this spiel over and over, but about three years ago, we developed a device refresh plan. And the goal of that plan was to place adequate devices in the hands of our students and our staff. And, uh, we're actually in our third year of, uh, that plan and we have truly changed the culture. Of, of expectation when it comes down to technology. Before, uh, before this, uh, whole refresh plan, uh, we had devices that we had to resurrect. We had to take a heart out of another device and, and place it in one device to, to make it work, but, uh, that is not the culture. So it has truly made our beginning of the year, our start of the year really much smoother because we have adequate devices. And, uh, we also did not, when we talk about devices, we also, we, we often talk about the students, but we included staff as well. This is actually our third year, uh, of this refresh plan and this is our, uh, third phase. Which we replaced, uh, new, we gave new devices to our elementary staff this year. And you would have thought that we gave them a million dollars. So with this refresh plan, this is actually has, uh, really, like I said, changed the culture and raised a lot of, uh, expectations, because we gotta keep it going. All right, uh, moving on to the next thing, uh, if you look at this slide, we have broken it down by, uh, our refresh. So your pre-k through first grade, we replace those devices every four years. And those particular devices are grade specific, so they stay in the grade level. Uh, our second, fifth, and ninth grade, uh, those devices are replaced annually. And we do it, uh, second, fifth, and ninth, because those students, they keep that device for four years. And we mapped it to warranty as well. And like I was just talking about, we also included our staff devices, saying we are in our third year and we finally got to the elementary level. And to maintain this, uh, refresh plan, it's 1.5 million dollars. Now, remind you, we have utilized ESF funds all the way up these three years. And this year, the ESF fund, it is a racket. If that is a, a word to say, but this is the last year that we are able to utilize the ESF fund. So, uh, as I said, there's 1.5 million dollars to maintain it. So we need to secure a funding source to support, uh, this device refresh, so that we can continue to be a competitive, uh, district in technology. So, uh, that's all I have and we're going to, uh, turn it back over to you, Dr. Ellis.
So the last slide will show. Two other areas and then we'll go into transfers, plan transfer. I do wanna thank the county commissioners for their support for these supplements, these retention bonuses. It is really helping when we recruit teachers from other counties, I wanted to discuss this today. The hard-to-fill positions, we still are offering bonuses for those hard-to-fill positions up here, you've got elementary exceptional children's program. Same as middle school, then you have math and science, high school has the same areas, and bus drivers, we are still short probably about 25 bus drivers right now. Thankfully, we have about 30 getting ready to be trained, but I'll let you know when they get trained, we're still waiting for that. Anyway, we do have a plan, so it's good to have a bonus involved in that piece. The, uh, retention bonus classified and certified are now receiving retention bonus for staying in the district. You bus drivers remain in the district for an entire year to receive that bonus. We started some of that two years ago and worked it into the classified positions because of the state scale salary that hasn't moved. Um, an example of what a teacher would receive as a, if they're going to a low performing school and say teaching math or science. They would receive basically a $3,000 bonus. If they are at a, uh, low performing school, which is under the lowest 5% in the state, they would get another $1,200, which means they would get about a $4,200 bonus to be at those schools. This has been a great way to. Keep quality teachers at these buildings and also to just keep them there. That's a good, that is a good amount. Our teacher with putting the bonus. And the last one is, we had a very competitive supplement for teachers and administrators, I just wanna thank county commissioners for that. We are probably have one of the best around, probably in seven or eight counties around us. So that has definitely been a draw to keep teachers to come to Nash County Public Schools as a supplement, so thank you. So at this time, we're gonna go into. Well, I guess I need to ask, you want us to hold questions on just this one and then go to the demerger? Go ahead and go to the demerger. Oh, any questions concerning anything we just discussed? With the rest of the state. I don't know the percentage, but we are now right at probably near Johnston County supplement, which is very good. I try not to get too close to figure out what Wake County does, it's like a 23 or 24, but I know Wilson does like an eight, eight to nine. Green is like five to six, so in our surrounding districts, we're pretty, we're pretty high. I think it's completely adequate, but you, you know. Correct, correct. So when these grants come out, they give you certain amounts of money based on AVM. And what is, what is interesting to me is when other districts are still putting security cameras, badges, and things of that nature, we are already ahead of the game. So you don't find many districts that have all this, what Mr. Ward talked about. The EVOL systems, the security badges, cameras, elementary schools, SROs. I don't know what else we could put in a school, Mr. Ward. For safety. And, and it's always gonna be a deterrent and we wanna make sure we keep this in these buildings, but I don't know what else we really could put in, because we have done a very good job. Of, uh, keeping that first. Well, and as Mr. Ward talked about, we have anonymous apps now, we have SROs in building. But still, most students feel very comfortable going up to a teacher or administrator when it talks, when it's about school safety.
Say something, app, they can do that anonymously, they don't feel comfortable.
Yes, sir.
I want to clarify the future funding the SROs elementary school. That money is funded through a state grant.
It's probably going to be two years. Correct. Correct.
The other thing was the technology. ESF funds are going back to issue for the past year. And the third thing is teacher subsidy. I believe we're probably at least in the top 15 in the state as far as teacher subsidy. We're probably ten less than that range. And I just want to encourage everyone to stay attentive to that because we need to maintain that if at all. Prove it to the test, that's purely forced.
Right. It, it comes up when teachers are asked and they wasn't us. Do we have?
Do you have a large number of teachers that leave Nash County?
To another school district? The majority of our teachers that leave our buildings now are getting out of education. And they're not going to local PHUs, they're going just out of the business. That's our problem right now.
We fare well, look at what we got from other districts versus what we lost.
So I can ask Ms. Heather Louise to probably speak to this, but I'm going to guess on this one, Heather, our latest numbers. But in our parent meetings, we keep being told about communication, communication. Every school's doing something different, every school's got a different app, every school's using some different software. This year, we went to one software app. It's called Thrill Share, and you can put it on your phone. Everyone can show it around back in our cabinet. And it basically gives all the information, every school, it's centrally located, everyone knows that that's our app now. We have about 9,000, close to 10,000 people have downloaded that app in Nash County. So that's telling us that parents are going to that app, getting the information. And also, there's a process we call rooms where a parent can find out where their student's teacher is, they can contact him in that app. So it's been very successful. In fact, it's higher than we've ever had it, if I'm right. So we hear that and we're trying our best to make sure parents are notified and they understand.
Just one question, just kind of refresh me on the one-on-one with Wes, playing whether the students keep the devices, take them home. How does, how does it really work? Okay, mostly, what, what are they, what's on the device homework? Okay. Do you have a problem with laws?
I, I just, I want some issues to run through today, unremarked sense of person belonging or that, that you take there, it's like this, they're wild.
And so at this time, we've, so this time, you're going to look at your other document, which says plan to transfer. Before we do that, I'm just going to explain a few things. First, I would say, we've said this several times, this has never been done. They didn't write a book on it, because if they did, I would have bought it and I would have read it. But this has been a, it is a heavy lift with two districts or demerging. But I will say, if you've been to some of these meetings, it has been a very good relationship with Edgecombe Public Schools and Nash County Public Schools. We've had a, some good conversations. We're keeping students first, so when you see this plan, you know, we're focusing on students. So just want to make sure, it has just been a, it's a heavy lift, but I think both sides understand students are in the middle of this and we want to make sure that they get the best education they can. So I'm going to first share with you this, there's an inventory list, and let me explain this. Miss Morris, if I murder this talk and what I'm talking about, I'll give an overview of what this list looks like before you go into the plan. So there are federal items in those schools that are being transferred to Edgecombe. And you're going to see numbers on this list of money, depreciation costs, because in federal items of purchase, we can't just give those items away. So what we did is we had an auditor to go into these buildings and find the federal merchandise in those buildings that are five year, five years or less, all the other ones signed, state and local items, they keep. Okay, but the federal piece is a little different. What you're going to see is, is a list of all the federal items in those schools that Edgecombe will have to either purchase or we take those items. Now, we're thinking they're going to want to purchase, that has been our conversation. But when you see this list, you're going to see a cost associated when we bought it. The federal government then has a expectancy, life expectancy, then they do a depreciation cost. So then you're going to see a cost factor to each one of them items. You can see it item out all the way down. In the transfer plan, you're going to see the figures, but this is going to show you what the items are, okay? So at this time, I don't know how to move it up. If you want to move it up just a little, just real quick, Mr. Ward is going to come up here and explain most of this. He's going to do an overview, if you have any questions, we've got our group over here to answer. But just letting you know, we meet next week with Edgecombe Commissioners and the Edgecombe School System to go over this plan again or to discuss this plan. November 15th, am I right? November 15th, we turn both plans into DPI. DPI has our plan right now, we sent ours, our lawyers, I think it's Thursday of last week, once the board saw our plan. So November 15th will be the day we turn all this in with signature. Mr. Ward, at this time, can you come up and give an overview and?
Hello again, I'm back, I drew the short straw. You should have this packet before you, and as Dr. Ellis said, I will just give you a brief overview of our plan. Starting on page one, of course, he just outlines with the table of contents through page one and two. Page three provides you with a pretty much an executive summary, putting the districts in historical context in terms of their existence, the coexistence, and now the demerger or the plan of transfer or the transfer to Edgecombe County of our students and assets. Also, the plan outlines in detail the core responsibilities and also the duties of our department heads. As well, it gives you a detailed plan of action for records, safety, security, transportation, technology, so forth. Page four is just a forward statements. As I mentioned earlier, page five is just the core responsibilities of each of the department head, starting with the superintendent. I will say that these duties and responsibilities are not exhaustive or limited to this particular script because we do a lot of planning and there's a lot of overlap with our department heads meeting together to discuss this plan. On page seven, I'm just list the team members of our transfer process addition, in addition to subcommittees that are within the plan as well. And that goes on to page eight. On page eight, we'll list, of course, our Nash County Board of Commissioners and our Nash County Board of Education members by district as well. On page nine, as Dr. Ellis said, this is just some enrollment numbers currently as of 3/21, but this is going to be updated just prior to us submitting the plan on the 15th to give more accurate numbers in terms of the students that's in our district by all configurations, elementary, middle, and high school. And in the far right-hand corner, you will see the impact that it would have post demerger of the students. This is again, just an estimation or guesstimation of what we will have post demerger. On the bottom number there is 12,928 students approximately. On page 10, just by configuration of all the four schools, give you the current number of staff members that are housed there as a total. Also included in that is the Teacher Resource Center, which is located beside the elementary school. On page 11 provides the fiscal impact, impact, I'm sorry. If you see for the state funding, there are none, but local funding, of course, the 25 million, of course, minus what revert to Edgecombe County, the $2 million for the local and for the federal, that number's 3.4 million dollars that will revert to Edgecombe County post demerger. Page 12 is just giving you a total number of positions that's in our district as of 22, 23 school year. For example, the 01 position or the PRC 001, those are our classroom teachers. And those are 705 positions that were allocated to us by the state in terms of positions. And as you can see, as you go down by the PRC code, what those positions or dollar amount or positions will incur. Excuse me. Page 13, again, just providing more detail, is broken down by certified and classified staff members, part-time and full-time in those four schools. And that's as of, again, that's at the beginning of the year. Again, we're going to change these numbers as we get closer to the submission date of November 15th. As Dr. Ellis alluded to earlier, on page 14, you will see the total number of assets by school, by PRC code, of federal dollars that was, that are being currently used in our schools. And those descriptors are at the bottom by PRC, so that will give you an idea of where the money is coming from. For instance, 50, those are Title I funds, which are all federal fund, these are all federal funds, all these PRC codes that you see before you. Also, to the right of that, you will see the life expectancy of the, the assets that you have before you. That's anything, like you said, anything over five years, we don't worry about, but those assets are listed by the number of years to give us the depreciated value. At the bottom of this, there will be a link, as Dr. Ellis said, for the federal equipment, furniture, technology, and inventory list. There will be a link, there, there is a link there, electronic link to give you access to that. So that will be the same information that you have there before you in the spreadsheet. Community engagement, that has been an ongoing process from day one in terms of keeping our stakeholders well informed about this process to make sure that we are giving full transparency to this process. So we did launch a communication plan through our communications director, Ms. Heather Finch, through student family engagement and also engagement with internal stakeholders as well. On page 16, it talks about the student transition process. This involves, this is very lengthy because it's going to involve the records of all the students, IEP folders, regular folders, 504 plans, any type of plan that a student may have, AIG students, all of that. In terms of this outlines how that information will be transferred or handled going to Edgecombe County Public Schools. On page 17, you will see, starting in July, we begin to talk about a deep timeline for transfers. This would be more detailed, once the plan is submitted and approved, then we can begin to talk more specifically to our families about options they may have in regards to those pre-K non-students that are going to Edgecombe County, and then those ninth grade students that are also going to Edgecombe County Schools, and those 10 through 13 students that may opt to stay, opt in to stay in Nash County Public Schools. And also, after that, we will have our plan coming forward with those 400 students that are currently in Edgecombe County Schools that live in Nash County, we will start working on that plan after that. And you may hear more from Dr. Ellis regarding that. And so our transfer process again is starting pretty much in November, December in terms of looking at options for students and answering questions and getting that out to the public. As you can see, this transfer process will take us well into 2024, April of 2024. We will be getting information out to the parents in terms of surveys and also forms for them to opt in, whether they want to stay or let us know what they decide to do in regards to this transfer process. And so this is pretty much spelled out and detailed in terms of how we plan to launch this. I've spoken about student records on page 19 now. Thank you, Tremaine. Safety and security, I alluded to that earlier in terms of the cameras, any of the equipment that's in the buildings that will remain because most of the cameras and equipment that are in those buildings for schools, they were paid for with local and state funds, with the exception of one EVOL system at Parker Middle School, that was purchased with federal funds. So that is on the federal asset inventory list for purchase. Transportation, our director of transportation is in constant communication with their director in regards to the number of buses that we will transfer over to Edgecombe County Schools. There are some challenges with that in terms of the number of buses for the type of buses because what we call a 66 passenger bus, that's the only type of bus they can accommodate at this time. We currently use 72 passenger buses, and their garage can only accommodate the 66 passenger. So there's conversations about how this is going to work with Mr. Byer. So that timeline is in place in terms of getting more direction from DPI in terms of the number of buses that will be transferred over. And that number two can also be based on the number of ADM students that are also transferring over to Edgecombe County. Our technology department, Mr. McQueen, he's alluded to earlier in terms of what he has done or is doing. All of his department, they've again given you a breakdown of federal assets that's in that plan, the spreadsheet, in terms of the equipment. As you can see here, that will consist of copy and machine, Cisco, Marica Network, Leichinger's, the vision, Hike Vision, which are the camera security systems that are in the buildings as well. And page 23 just give you a breakdown of cost again, in terms of student devices, staff devices, cameras, scanners. And page twenty-three just give you a breakdown of cost again, um, in terms of student devices, staff devices, cameras, scanners, projectors, interactive boards, uh, printers. Uh, televisions that are in the schools and um. Those numbers there, those numbers represent the total cost per school. And page twenty-four, of course, just brings us to the conclusion of this plan. Also, at the end of this plan, you will find an appendix, which again, you do have a hard copy of that, that will also be included in the hard copy that we will submit to DPI. Shall I wait for questions?
Any questions? Oh, hell, if I could say a couple things, uh, having been in those meetings and you pointed out very well. That they have gone extremely well, uh, which I think surprised some of us. Out of the four boards that work together or representatives of them. Really, the only thing that is left to resolve is this. Equipment list that was purchased with federal funds. Unfortunately, the statute that came from the state that created all this did not address that. I don't think they anticipated that. And what it says in the statute is that everything in the schools will be left in the schools. Then we did. Realize well into the process that the federal thing that the purchase or pay for the federal funds. Has a clause that says it can't be left, so. We just haven't resolved how we're going to settle that nine hundred some thousand dollars there. Edgecombe, of course, feels like they want to go by statute and I understand why they believe because that's what the statute says and. Is there any update? I know they went to see DPI recently, did we get anything from that that we won't say tonight? Or is it still up in there like it was?
The only update was. Federal piece is still that it's depreciated value based on what the federal government applies the depreciation call. Um, I believe Edgecombe brought up something about fair market value instead of a depreciated value. And I think we were concerned that if that was the case, if we were to get audited. Especially through S R funding, which is billions of dollars. They would ask, so why was this TV sold for four hundred dollars and on the depreciated list that says eight hundred? But there's a, that would be a rub for us because when it's gone, we have to account for it. So that's been the issue we're facing. I don't know what a fair market value of a desk would be. So a lot of those items you see are desk computers. TVs, so it's just a plethora of stuffs, I don't know how you would do a fair market value. The way the feds do it is a pretty good system of depreciation, years, cost, bands, still, so. That's what we want to do.
If you hear that talk, that's what's going on. Trying to resolve what the statute didn't cover more or less. Or a way before. The other thing that we've heard several times was that Nash would be giving Edgecombe all the old buses and that's not true. As we stated, uh, we cleared up just a little bit, they have a garage over there that can only accommodate certain things. Therefore, they have to take the six buses to be able to put them in their cars. Unfortunately, it is true. Most of the sixty-six buses will be our oldest buses. But indeed, if we do it that way, it's because of the garage, not because we go through handpicking and giving them the worst. I think we cleared it up pretty well.
And I think there's some other school systems that are using some of those buses and there's a trading system that DPI will allow you to do with other counties not using buses. Which would be a new book.
Talking about, you talk about buses or you talk about. Uh, what I'm saying was that the statute written how this process will work. Didn't anticipate that there was some equipment that we couldn't leave in the school, no cost, because it was all with others. That's why we have that to work through. All uh, not been covered in the statute, not by anybody working on the process. It 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 can be too. Well, I'd like to have. Like the federal fund, so it would have to be. Get involved in that as well. That's what I said, so get them involved in that as well.
They need to.
I'm just trying to hit those folks that you may hear out in public. Been an issue and why they are an issue, just by cause of. Legal things that we're having to work through.
So the last comment, Mr. Ward talked about a second plan. Just remember, when this plan is submitted, then Nash County County Schools begins to talk about the redistrict piece for us because they're about four hundred and fifty kids that'll do disciplines. They won't have a school, they live on the next side. So our second plan would be, we're in conversations with N C State about where these students could go to school. So there'll be another plan possibly when we meet. Often, maybe we do our budget presentation where we'll share that information.
Could you touch, we touched on the difference of getting into the details, just go through a little more detail how it works for those tenth, eleventh and twelfth grades. That will be remaining possibly at senior high, so that'll be a three-year process to complete everything.
So the original plan was tenth, eleventh and twelfth grades would be grandfather legacy then. So they would stay in basically Rock Mountain High School, there's a few on the fringe, I think it's National High School, just a few. Those students would be, they would be able to just stay there. Then the conversation came around, however, kid was in. You could actually have an eighth grader who's in Edgecombe County and their brother goes to Rock Mountain High School in Nash County. So we want to go ahead and just make sure those students who won't stay opt in to stay. We think the majority will, we just want to have a record that those kids are opting to stay. Then the ninth grade, well, excuse me, then the tenth grade, eleventh and twelfth, so after three years, those students will have articulated fruit and it'll be just Nash County. That's why we're going to do pretty much an early transfer opt-in process, just to find out the numbers, because we're going to need to know. How many students are staying for our state allocations for teachers in those groups.
There probably be some redistricting at the high school level to equalize the numbers in those schools that you want.
And that's our next, we're going to have to talk about that, please.
Other questions? I think it would be easier to get them after tonight than it would next week with double the number of people present, so anything you can think of. We should like clear it up.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Right, we're on item number six on the agenda that is two of personnel prepared for tonight is Nash County Commissioner update. I really don't have anything specific, uh, any board member have anything they'd like to say, uh. As related to the school system, any updates that you'd like to or anything, if you have one in mind whatsoever. Closing out after that.
Shouldn't we have not concerned about this whole process?
Well, I am a little bit.
Well, you don't have to be concerned about me because I've been to meetings and I've heard a lot of this, so I'm pretty much familiar with what was said here tonight.
And that may be the case of all of you.
It may be, I don't know.
I've just been nervous the whole time, but it seemed like it had gone extremely well due to the point that. Goes right on over the goal line, just like it's working. And next Monday night will be a good night once we get through that awful whole stuff.
So I mean, federal assets, she said, we're going to do what's the right thing for the children. What if that ends up being, I know that's what we're going to do.
Okay. Well, I've heard that in every meeting about ten times, so I've been at all the public meetings as well, so I believe everybody has sort of bought into that. But I'll just say on behalf of our board, uh, we greatly appreciate the working relationship that we've had, though we're not quite through. But it has been very pleasurable, I think, or. And as Dr. Ella says, we're doing something that's never been done and didn't have a roadmap to look at, but uh, maybe we can pass our roadmap along to someone else that they have to go through. All I have to say.
And Mr. Chairman, um, on behalf of the Board of Education, we echo those sentiments and want to say thank you to our county commissioners. And we're looking forward to uh, progressing forward. Um, if there's no further business to come before the Board of Education. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Board Member E. Bullock for the record, seconded by Dr. Chavis, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Meeting adjourned.
And we had a uh, meaningful closed session after this meeting to tend to a matter of attorney-client privilege, so we have another room that we're going to move to. Uh, for just a very few minutes, and then we will come back out here to recess at the end of that. And we won't, what we'll be doing is recessing, our Board of Commissioners will be until next Monday night. Uh, sixteenth at seven o'clock, which will be at the Rock Mountain event center. So, uh, I I would entertain a motion to go in the closed session at this time. Have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner, by Commissioner Outlaw, question on the motion. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we say aye. Any opposed by a like. Motion carries and would take about a ten-minute recess, then we'll reconvene in the room.